Okay, I'd like to call to order this regular meeting for July 20th, 2021. Mr. Hiddle, please call and roll.
Mr. Frazier.
Here.
Mr. Ford.
Here.
Mrs. McMackin.
Here.
And everyone, please stand and join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the law of the United States of America, to the republic which is states, one nation, under God, indivisible, veritable, just as for all. All right. So we're moving on to the agenda. Can I get a motion?
So move.
Second?
Second.
All right, all in favor? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion approved. Now we're moving on to the approval of the minutes from our special meeting in May for graduation and also from June 22nd for a regular meeting. If there's no changes to be made, can I get a motion to approve?
So move.
Second.
All in favor? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. So we do not have Mr. Height here tonight for an Upper Valley Career Center report, so we will wait till next month. And then no items from the public. So moving on to the treasurer's agenda, Mr. Hiddle.
Good evening. Everybody's had a chance to look at the monthly financial reports with any questions on that. We were able to get June closed. I won't say that it went easily. It took me most of the month of July so far to get that to happen because we have the new software and let's just say that the old software is archaic as it was in the DOS era. This was horrible to try to close with. So it's been frustrating, but we were able to get it all finished. And the county auditor has all their information and said that it all looked good, so we made it through that process. But it was stressful to get there, but we got it done. So are there any questions about those reports? And the other item on there tonight is just the order to pay the school district funds from Miami County Auditor. They have us do this every new contract. And so when I restart my new contract, it's time to up this. And it basically just says you can pay me, the treasurer, the money from the county auditor's office, not directly. I know you're giving that look, Sean, to work. Yes, here's my bank account. No. But they have to have somebody on file as the person who gets paid on that person. Those are just the two items that we have tonight on my agenda.
Okay. Motion to approve the treasurer's agenda.
So move.
Second.
All in favor? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Mr. Thompson, this is the superintendent's agenda.
Thank you. Good evening. Normally we have a school come and do a presentation. In the summer, we try to do a little bit more. It seems like that's not going to work right now. In August, we'll do a really, really good update in terms of all the work we're doing to get ready for the next year and things that are happening with some of the staff, just all the things in general. Right now, we've got curriculum department here, Mrs. Anderson and Mr. Bloom, who are going to give some updates on some of the work that they're doing this summer.
Okay. Good evening. This evening, I want to update you on the standards-based assessment and teaching-for-mastery work that we've been doing at Pickle Central Intermediate. So this coming school year, we are going to be transitioning to standards-based assessments and report cards across the whole building. And this has been a multi-year process. We've had to adjust our timeline several times over the last couple of years for a variety of circumstances, not to mention the global pandemic that threw a little monkey wrench in a few things. But we are very excited that we are ready for full implementation this fall. I want to say that this would not be possible if it weren't for the leadership team at PCIS. Mr. Butler, Mrs. Askin, and Mrs. Mullenkamp fully embraced this project this year and made it a priority in their building. And their team and their staff have spent many, many, many hours working to accomplish this transition. So kudos to them, and they've just have been fantastic in all their work. Every team at PCIS met twice a month with me and the principals to get all this work done and to prepare for the implementation. We've been working on prioritizing the standards. We've developed pacing guides. We've created mastery rubrics for every standard and every content, every grade level. We've created new report cards. And most recently, our time has been dedicated to developing and refining common assessments for every standard. Every department and grade level has met at least once for an entire workday this summer. Some of them for a second workday, and some of them still have another day planned this summer. So that kind of tells you their dedication to making sure that they have everything ready and in place to make this successful next year. So at the August board meeting, we should have the final versions of the report cards back from Meta, so we'll be able to present those to you for approval at that time. And then we'll be able to get everything out on the website and begin making sure that parents and students are ready for this transition as well. So that's been a huge, huge project that we're finally going to get ready to embark on this next year. Just a couple of other quick things. Careful Corners starts next week. We're going to be doing that at Spring Creek in collaboration with the Pickle Police Department. And we've had great interest. Currently, we have 47 students registered to participate, which is almost double from the last time we did it. So we're excited about that. And then as we look into August, we're starting to turn our wheels into kindergarten screening. We'll have kindergarten boot camp summer program coming up, the week of August 23rd through the 27th. And we have lots of professional development days planned for August, but Mr. Bloom's going to give you details on those.
Good evening. So we'll kind of switch gears, go 712 here, and just talk about where we're at. Similar to the standards-based work, we have just completed curriculum mapping for model curriculum, grade 712. Now, that's taken two and a half years. Typically, we'd not do that, but we had to stop right in the middle when we closed the school and everything happened. In fact, when we reopened those, we could go to the exact date. It was March whatever when we said, okay, we can't do this anymore. So we have completed those over the summer. Those are based on the model curriculum that is put out by the Department of Education. So our core content, math, science, social studies, ELA, language arts, we now have pacing guides, curriculum guides that are based on the state models. And that's what we follow at all of those courses. And that's what we will use. The teachers are now prepared to implement those when we head into the school year. And it's very helpful for us and for them to know what is our sequence, what strategies do we use so that we can be unified when we discuss how effective our instruction is? So it's really good to have those done. We were a recipient of a Martha Holden Jennings grant. It was a $15,000 grant. We now have the same kind of science tools, grades 412, so that we can really increase the student's literacy with that kind of learning. I just met with the grant folks the other day. They have approved us to apply for further funds. So my goal is to take what we're doing there all the way to K3. And we have some of the science kinds of labs that we can do with those younger students. So kids would have the same set of experiences across all grade levels. So pretty excited about that. We have a coding program that now runs K through eight. Kids can work here at school or at home with this. It's online, self-paced. It's very student-friendly, and we have places for them to work here in the district. Everything from basic coding all the way to eventually high school AP, computer science. We can use the same platform. So it's nice to be able to do that. So if your student comes home and wants to code, we have a way to do that. That's then supported in school as well. So it's a nice bridge back and forth. Flex Factor, you'll see it here on the board agenda. This is in partnership with Sinclair. This is a free program that is supported through Sinclair Community College. They will come and work with our students in our high school success-bound courses. And these are, this is a place for students to see all sorts of different occupations, businesses, careers, paths that they could take as they move through high school and beyond. So this Flex Factor program is really based on the sort of the business problem-solving model. Basically, if you were in business or you were in a career and you had a problem to solve, how would you do it? How would you find the information you needed to come up with a product? How would you need to pitch that? How would you need to plan this? And they will come and work with us, with those students in all of, in those courses. So very excited about that. We've gone through that. The instructor there is very excited about how it works. It's inaugural year for us, so we'll see how it runs. But all of the indicators look like it's a really good program for us. And it's in addition to what we already do. It's about a five-week, five-to-six-week process. So it will be implemented in the existing courses that we have. So I'm looking forward to that. We continue to add to our aviation course at Pickle High School. This is, again, a free curriculum through a group called AOPA. That is the Aircraft Owners and Pilots Association. This will be our second year with that course. It is a four-year program, so we'll have students who are entering into year two. By the third year, the kids will actually be able to choose one of two pathways, unmanned vehicles, those are drones, or they can actually sit for their first pilot exam, one of the two. So that's, again, no cost to the students. So in that course now, we have drones. We have simulators. We have four flight simulators now. We plan to add to that. We just purchased six RC planes for them to fly. So the kids will be able to do, yeah, they're really neat. They'll be able to do all of these different experiences in aviation. We will work with Sinclair, Wolpert, and Hartzell as well. Now that we can hopefully go and do some things, the kids will be able to go and see all of those places. They've already agreed to work with us. Sinclair is one of the largest drone programs in this region. Wolpert is in Dayton, and they are, they are the company who actually maps airspace, if you want to know what they do. So when you're flying and you want to know, how do I get handed off from one control unit to the other? That's what they do. And of course, you know Hartzell. So we've already talked, and we'll be able to do some neat things with them. We will start working with ACT profiling this summer, working with our business partners to actually connect their job skills to our curriculum for our work-based learning students. So we're excited about that. Summer PD, we have done a lot already. We have done everything from mapping of our curriculum to working with our science tools and materials. We will work with iXL. It's a program that we use. Teachers will start coming here in August to work on a litany of things. Everything from iXL to our maps again, to how we use planning, our online planning tools, how we use assessments. So we have a lot that will happen in August. We're looking forward to it. It just gets busy now. Trying to hurry and fit everything in the last month of the year. So thank you.
Teresa, yes, the standards-based report card was already in motion for K through three, correct?
Correct.
So now, starting this year, it's going to go from four to six?
Correct.
Okay. And what was the feedback after last year with the K through three level? Do they feel like parents and teachers were all adjusted to it?
I think we still have some work to do there. I mean, it's such a huge shift in thinking to go away from letter grades to that mastery learning. So realistically, we still have work to do there. I don't pretend to say that everybody is right where we need them to be, but we've made good progress and we'll continue to work there. And it continues to work, fit in with our goals moving forward, our building and our district goals in terms of ensuring that all students are making at least a year's growth. And that whole process of knowing for every standard, that rubric of what students need to know, where they are, and how they grow to get to the next level is a huge part of that. So we'll continue to work on it and develop it. And if people have questions or need, you know, want to know more, we're happy to explain that to them and help them understand it because we know we still have some work to do there. But it's still, it's still, the system as a whole, understanding that, you know, just to get a C on the report card doesn't tell a parent very much about why their child got a C. It doesn't give you specific feedback, nor does it give the student specific feedback in terms of, well, how do I get better? Or why didn't I get a B or an A? So when you take that grade element out and we start focusing on very specific skills that students need, it should help us see that growth and development that we're looking for in all students. We'll continue to work on it.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions for curriculum? Just wanted to reintroduce Nolan Campbell, who is our student rep. I think it was last week that you guys came up with the idea of let's get some student voice involved with our board discussions. He's not a voting member. We've talked about before, but he certainly is a voice that we can turn to at any point in any meeting and ask questions. And he may even go back and ask other kids for some input on some things that you're interested in knowing about. He certainly brings the idea of working with some socio-emotional learning and mental health kinds of things with students. As you might recall, he just reflected on what happened over the last couple of years with students and the lack of resources that may have been available for some kids that were home. So he'll be working a lot with Mindy Gerhart. She's actually got some really good things she's going to be reaching out to Nolan with, and they're going to start working on that process. And the great thing is, by the time this year is over, he'll come up with some kind of a proposal and bring that to you guys for an adoption, and it'll be great work. So Nolan, do you have anything you want to add or share?
I'm just really excited to be here, and I think it's going to be a great year. Thank you.
You're going to be a senior this year?
Yes.
All right. And cross-country right now?
Yeah.
Okay. What else are you going to be involved with?
I'll run track in the spring, and that's pretty much it for school.
All right, very good. Any questions for Nolan? All right. A question that we're getting a lot right now is regarding masks. So, you know, there's just news kind of all over the place. So what we know right now is there is no mask mandate. The CDC continues to say they recommend it to people, particularly if you haven't been vaccinated. There is no mandate for vaccinations. There's no mandate for masks. Our plan currently doesn't have that. We respect people's rights on that. We encourage people, if they want to wear one, they certainly can. We don't know what guidance will come in the future. It kind of happened to us last year. We had our plan, and then two weeks before school, it came out, and we had to really make all these fast shifts. So I've always tried to be very intentional with communication. I know we get one time to get that out there to people. We do have our current opening plan on our website, and it's out there. People have called and asked questions, and I refer them to that. But right now, we are, we recommend that if you want to wear it, you don't have to. Same thing with vaccinations. It's there. CDC guidelines kind of recommend it, but we're not pushing people into that direction. So any questions on that? Are you guys getting any questions?
We have some people who ask.
Yeah.
But there was an article just recently in the paper about area schools and what they were doing, and some of them weren't commenting yet, or they didn't know, and some of them...
It's a tough thing, and most superintendents are in the same spot because we lived it last year. We all, you know, we waited for them to give us guidance. They said, it's up to you. We all gave our guidance and put it out, and then they came back and said, well, now it's up to us. We're going to make it happen, and it just kind of blew up.
Right.
We don't get information until the governor goes on TV and talks. That's when everybody gets it. And then we kind of get a lot of responses in terms of what are you going to do to respond to his response? And we don't know because then we have to go through a lot of steps. And then we've got local guidance from our health department. Right now, you see the pediatric group is disagreeing with CDC, who also is different than the World Health Organization. It's just everywhere. So we're going by what we're allowed to do at this point. Feedback we're getting is people want that choice. So vaccination is there, if they want it.
Right.
They can get it. If they don't, we respect that right. And we'll continue to do things like cleaning and keeping space and doing any guidance that we have. I should point out that the higher revised code never did eliminate quarantining. That is still there. So if a student is not vaccinated and they're within proximity of somebody that was COVID-positive, they would have to quarantine still. That's never been lifted.
Do they have to show you their vaccination card?
No. All we've been told at this point is we still have to report to the health department, any cases. So if we report to the health department and then anybody that would have been in close contact, the health department would have that information. They would give us the guidance in terms of what would happen. So we're not asking kids or parents if they're vaccinated. We're not going to have that information. So it'll be to the health department to make that determination. It's my understanding if they are vaccinated, they wouldn't have to quarantine though, if they were in close proximity.
And that recommendation is still 10 days, correct?
Yeah. So...
To be determined.
It is to be determined. And right now, that's where it stands. And, you know, I can be firm with that, but I don't know what's going to happen, how it changes later. And that's kind of where everybody's at. We are truly anxious to get everybody back. We miss having everybody. We were ready to get some things started. I shared with you, we're going to give you an update in August in terms of the work we're doing. I think it's going to be an exciting year. You know, things don't look good in terms of data for any schools. I mean, across the state, they're down because we've not been in school. Kids have been, in some districts, shut out completely. So it's just all over the map. We're ready to really bring that focus back and get started. And we can really do that if we get kids back with us.
So is there even an online option at all?
No. We have an online option for our high school. We've always had that option. And that hasn't changed for credit recovery and so on. But we did it last year because of the mask mandate. Did not go well. We had a number of kids that did not participate fully. You know, we had some that did well. I won't, you know, disregard that. But overall, when you look at an online situation, you many times have kids that are completing tasks, but that's different than mastering content. And you really only get to do that when you get to have really good interaction and you have people guiding that, and you're working with your peers, and you're learning socially and so on. So we just don't think that's the best way for us to save our providing education. It's hard for us to stay in a budget and allocate the number of people that it would really take to make that happen. And then if you only have, you know, three kids per this grade and four that grade and so on, it's hard to really bring your focus in on that, too. So there may be some parents that want to choose that. K-12 will be a great option to register. They could get a different kind of focus, I think, you get from their personnel because they're designed to be like that. So right now, our goal is to get everybody back and give them the attention that we want to do and bring that social kind of aspect back to learning.
So if, you know, a quarantine has to take place, what would a student do for next year? I mean, if they're wanting to leave that...
Oh, they could, they could still work with a teacher through Google Classroom.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, they would still have that direct connection.
Okay.
But in terms of like a curriculum, can you put it out every day where you're just going to do that? Yeah.
Okay.
Questions or thoughts? It's to be continued. I mean, we're all kind of in limbo. So right now, that's my hope. A lot of people are thinking there won't be an outright mandate on it, so we'll see what happens.
Yep. Put it back.
Yeah. That's it for me.
All right. So moving on to the superintendent's agenda.
All right. I'd like to recommend the board approval of the attached list of donations and grants of the Pickle City District. So we have the Altrusa Foundation that donated some money, and then the Jumpathon that came in. Many people donated to my father's memorial donation for the Friday Night Lights, and I personally wrote thank yous, but I appreciate what everybody did with that. And then the, some grants that came through, the K-12 Prevention Education Grant, the Tri County Grant that came through, all great contributions to what we're doing here, and I appreciate those donations. And then I recommend the board approval of the attached Pickle City School District Free and Reduced Lunch Policy and Food Service Department Annual Compliance Report for the 2122 school year. Jennifer Garland does an amazing job. I mean, we're very lucky to have her, and we already put out notice to parents that breakfast and lunches next year will be free again. That came from the USDA. I'm going to continue that program for another year. People are predicting that'll continue, but we'll see. But right now, nobody's going to have to pay for breakfast or lunch programs. Recommend board approval of the attached Flex Factor program as part of the high school success-bound courses. That program is in partnership with the Sinclair Community College, and you heard Mr. Bloom talk a little bit about that. Recommend board approval of the attached classified staff handbook for the 2022 school year. Basically, provides them with guidance and direction, so that doesn't change each year. So that's it.
Okay. Any questions? Can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
So move.
Second.
All in favor? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
One final thing. We do have a lot of information on our website, so anybody that's watching, you can go there. There's a link right on our website that has all the updated information on scheduling and when things are going to be released and school fees and supplies. We'll start on August 1st officially sending that out electronically to people, but it's there, and a lot of people have checked in on it already, but it's there for anybody that wants to look at it.
Okay.
That's it.
All right. So moving on to the personnel agenda with Mr. Lannan.
Thank you. Not uncommon for this time of the year, several resignations and hires on the agenda. Hopefully, now that we've gotten past that July 10 deadline where people have to be, can't be released from their contracts unless we decide that that's something they want to, we won't see any more resignations at this point. We are, you may have seen on social media, pushed for some additional bus drivers. We were able to pick up two new bus drivers in the past two weeks, which will give us the ability to have our full fleet covered, plus two full-time substitute bus drivers for next year. But we want to continue to onboard those people and get them prepared to be sub-bus drivers. And we are paying them to train now. We do all the training here. So again, we put that out there to the public. It's a great opportunity to come in and have full time and access to benefits if people are looking for something like that. So outside of that, not a lot of changes on the personnel agenda for the month of July.
Are there any buses that are going out this year? And then we have new buses or no?
So yes, there's two buses that are on order, and then you get ready.
I knew, I knew there were some that cycled out. Okay.
They are usually coming?
A little bit earlier than now, but hopefully it'll be here to start school, but we'll see.
Yeah.
We've got enough to start.
Yeah, we're good. Yeah.
Tony, the maintenance and custodian at athletics, what is that?
That's a position we had that was originally just facilities at the stadium. That wasn't a position that we needed to have totally by itself, so it turned into facilities. So we had a custodian essentially that was taking care of the stadium, taking care of the grounds, baseball fields, lining, things like that. Worked stadium as well. And then also, in the time, did the gymnasium for basketball, so all sports, taking care of those facilities. But also, in those times when we don't have athletics going on, doing maintenance inside the, it's a position that's existed in the past, just at high school, just at the high school. So if it's just custodial because there's not, or in between seasons or something, that person works at the high school. So we just hired Tammy for that. It's a replacement position.
Okay.
Anything else? Thank you.
Thank you. So we need a roll call, correct?
Motion, second.
Motion for approval. Call rule, please.
Mr. Frazier.
Aye.
Mr. Ford.
Aye.
Mrs. McMackin.
Aye.
Okay. So move on to old business, which we don't have anything, correct?
Yep.
So on to new business.
So the first item we have there tonight for your approval is a shared service agreement with the Upper Valley Career Center for the food service supervisor position that Jennifer Garland has been doing for multiple years. It sort of helps out, reduces the cost to Pickle City Schools, but also helps out the Career Center. Those licenses are hard to come by. There's not a lot of people who do that. And so we sort of split that up, and it does help us to be able to afford to take care of her and the Career Center. And she's willing to keep doing it. So that's a good thing. So that's the first thing I need approval of, is that agreement.
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And on to the second item.
The second item is to approve the Treasury and Superintendent to enter into agreements with Miami County Educational Service Center, July 1st, 2021 through June 30th, 2022. This is something that we do every year, and a lot of times, things crop up with the ESC. And this allows Dwayne and I to get into those agreements without bringing them constantly to you. But usually, they're tiny little things that pop up. Otherwise, we have our normal deductions that we use for the employees that we pay for from the ESC. So it's a normal routine.
Can I get a motion for approval?
Second.
Okay, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Third item.
Next item on there is another annual summertime thing, is where we approve the OSBA Transportation Supervisor Subscription Program that runs through the OSBA. Since it is the school board, and the school board organization, we always bring it to you for your approval. And it is, it's something that Beth uses in transportation and things. Beth and Eugene.
So can we get a motion for approval?
So move.
This second, okay. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, and the last item.
Yes, last item tonight is recommend board approval of the attached resolution determining to proceed with the submission of a substitute tax levy. Last month, we had the initial paperwork that we passed, and then we filed that with the county auditor's office, got the return. That is attached to this as well as the resolution to go ahead and proceed putting this on the ballot in November. Again, this is a substitute levy. It's no new taxes. It's really taking our emergency levy that we've been running traditionally in the past and moving it over to what's called a substitute levy. It doesn't change anything for a taxpayer, except we're not going to keep coming back asking you about an emergency levy. It gets rid of that language and, and changes it to what they call a substitute levy. So it's no new taxes. It doesn't change anything. We're not asking for additional funds. Like, we're just trying to get that out of the way because we've been it for, I think, we're at year 17? It's, I mean, we've been doing this for a while now, and, and so it's not an emergency per se. And we always get that question, like, why is this an emergency? And it's like, it'd be an emergency if it didn't exist, but it's not an emergency in that regard any longer. So I think doing the substitute levy will help clarify that for people, that we're not trying to continue this emergency situation that's not in existence. Any questions?
All right. Can I get a motion to proceed with that?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So carry on, or motion carries. So no, here ain't nothing for hearing of the public for non-agenda items. So in that case, our next regular meeting will be on Thursday, again, August 26th, at 6:00 PM here. So do I have a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Okay. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion approved. Meeting is adjourned.